If I could, I'll go ahead and call our meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here this evening. Item one on our agenda is to establish a quorum of our board team. We do have a quorum of our board team. I heard from Mr. Hernandez just recently, and he's working with a client and most likely will not be here. But anyway, that covers item one. Item two on our agenda is our invocation. We're honored this evening to have Tommy Richardson, the senior pastor to Manuel Baptist Church, and he's going to lead us in our invocation.
You'd pray with me. Lord, we come to you, Lord, humbled by who you are and how good you are to us. For these that are gathered here today to offer leadership, not just to our community, but, Lord, the individuals, the families, the children, their parents, Lord, for the guardians that are there, the caregivers. I just ask that, Lord, for this group, you'd grant them wisdom, discernment, that you would guide them in the decision-making process, that, Lord, they'd be a blessing to you as we look to you for your blessings. Lord, for our community, I ask, would you please bring the rain? And then, Lord, today, may we honor you with our lives, with our words, with our actions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you so much. Before you leave, we were talking to Tommy a little bit before our meeting, and the church has been a really good partner for Reagan for a number of years, so I want to thank you for partnering with that elementary school and in that neighborhood. So certainly, it's important for our community to embrace our schools, but for y'all to have that long-term of a commitment, we appreciate it. So, thank you. All right, our next item are pledges. I'll lead us in our pledges if everyone would stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Our next item is recognitions. We're recognizing, we're honored to recognize Lakeview High School and Central High Schools' junior ROTC programs, and Matt's going to do that for us, so thank you for being here.
Absolutely. Good evening. Thank you, and good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board. It is our great privilege this evening to recognize our instructors from both of our junior ROTC detachments here in SAISD, as well as some of our student cadet leaders from both schools. Continuing in their strong tradition, they are here this evening because both units received the distinguished unit award for the past school year. The distinguished unit award recognizes personal growth and accomplishments of the cadets, contributions of the instructors as mentors, and the support of the school and the local community. These students represent the best of the best of ROTC units worldwide. Cadets and instructors, we commend you this evening for your outstanding accomplishments. I would like to call on Sergeant Kyle Mantel from Lakeview Junior ROTC. He will be introducing those that are with him this evening and giving us a little more information about their school year that just ended.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Just to let you know, side information too, we received word that Major Eskel, our new senior instructor, should be moving into the Conshohaw Valley here on the 1st of July. So we'll have a full complement of instructors back up at Lakeview then. Okay. Our two cadets that came with us tonight are Cadet Jesse, Colonel Jesse Smith, Jesse, sorry Jesse, Jesse White, long day, buddy, okay? And Cadet Lieutenant Colonel Lillian Street. Jesse is our corps commander, and Lillian is our resource officer, if I remember correctly, or legit, or which is going to be resource, we're changing the names. So with these kids this year, despite the fact that we did have a turnover with our senior instructor, we were able to, our cadets were able to put forth over 3,500 hours of community service with about 140 cadets. That's a pretty good record. It comes out, they average just right around 20, 25 hours of community service per cadet. Of that community service that they pulled, they did over 51 color guards, and they participated in 100 different community service events throughout San Angelo and the local community. So in short, they did a darn good job in that. This is their 14th time in the last 15 years that they've won the distinguished unit. The other award that they had was the outstanding unit back in 2004. But ever since then, they have been either distinguished unit, distinguished with merit, and Lakeview couldn't do it without the cadets. So, here you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, photo out front, yeah. Yeah. Ladies, if you want to get closer too, come on up and, please, come get 'em.
Good job. Thank you so much. Great job, Street.
Thank you. Thanks again. Good job, Mr. White. Thanks. You tell.
And now, our Central High School Junior ROTC detachment has earned similar honors, and Sergeant George Marquez, would you please come forward, as well as your cadets, and tell us a little bit about the great things that you all have accomplished this school year?
I usually do not stand behind a podium. It's a matter of height. It, when my active-duty job was, I was briefing crews, flight crews and stuff, and they used to call me the briefing podium, because the podium was a lot taller than this. So I learned to go to the side so there wouldn't be snickering and laughing the whole time they're supposed to be listening to my briefing. I am Master Sergeant Marquez. I have been at Central for 24 years, and I start my 25th year this year, Lord willing. And I am, I do it every year because of the way, these cadets just amaze me. They are amazing young people and have developed the discipline. I've known them for anywhere from three to four years, and they impress me. And the reason I've been doing this for 24 years is because of them, and I welcome them. Major Carney and Chief Prince aren't here, they're unfortunately out of town, so it fell to me to be here, and I don't mind being here at all. I like talking about my unit. All right, I'll do the things a little bit differently. Major wants the cadets to read of our accomplishments. So they'll come up, introduce themselves, and read some of the accomplishments.
Hello, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Cadet, well, I'm Cadet Angelica Ramirez. Cadet, I'm sorry, woo! I'm Angelica Ramirez, and I'm an executive officer in our senior staff. And what I do in our corps, my job is to basically take notes over all of our meetings and just keep track of what we do and our accomplishments and our, we set goals for our unit every year, and we, I just keep it, like, keep it on the road so that we get there. About our unit, we received our every third, every third-year Air Force Junior ROTC Headquarters Inspection from Major Bailey. We received the highest rating of exceed standards, and we were recognized as a distinguished unit with merit. We complete, we as a, as a unit, we completed 4,368 community service hours with events, including, but definitely not limited to, we have a 9/11 remembrance ceremony. We provide spirit teams for all Central football games so that we're there for our school. We supported the Central Band and football games and UIL competitions, because we love to support our school. We're very orientated with our classmates. Central High School's Choir Military Salute, United Way Day of Caring, and we have flag etiquette training for 5th graders at Reagan Elementary School. And we have a Tom Green County Constitution Day, and Cadet Lawrence will continue. Thank you.
So to add on to our accomplishments, we did a House of Faith Golf Fundraiser Tournament, and that's basically us going down there and helping set up, making sure everything runs smoothly. We did a banquet breakfast for teachers and staff, because they give us so much, and without them, we wouldn't be the students that we are today. We did also a custodian appreciation dinner, so we fed them hamburgers and hot dogs, because they clean up after us, and it'd be nice every once in a while. And we are messy, I gotta admit. We did a National's Honor Society Induction Ceremony to represent, or not represent, but, what's the word? Appreciate and acknowledge the highest-graded students that we have. We also raised money for the Children's Miracle Network. We did it between all of our flights, it was kind of like a competition. We also did over 50-plus color guards to include. Also, we did the district convocation, I'm not sure what that is, but, yeah. And also, we did multiple central events, including pep rallies, parades, and now...
I'm Cadet Sedenya. To include our accomplishments, we also done middle school and elementary school color guards, as well as like local community events. And like you said, we did, we do parades as well as central events, and we've done a fundraiser for Fort Chadburn with a Vietnam veteran. He's a Medal of Honor recipient. And we've also participated in two parades, which would be the San Angelo Veterans Day Parade, as well as the San Angelo Stock Show and Rodeo Parade. And this last year, we've competed in at least eight drill meets, bringing home 50-plus trophies. Cadet Stumpel.
Hello, I'm Cadet Stump, and including this year, we took a trip to Fort Davis and visited the historic Fort Davis, as well as completing a grueling 14-mile hike through the Fort Davis Mountains in remembrance of the Baton Death March. We also completed a second 14-mile hike to the, from Central to the military base in remembrance of the Baton Death March. We also led a cadet leadership camp at Howard Payne University, which was a few weeks ago. 29 high schools attended this school across the state of Texas and one from Oklahoma, with 250 attending cadets.
That concludes our little spiel.
Thank y'all so much.
It's always great to start a school board meeting by recognizing the many accomplishments of our students across the district. We thank you for your support. Without the school board, these student accomplishments wouldn't be possible. And that concludes our student recognitions for this evening.
Thank you. And certainly, I, and really, as a board, we're so proud of y'all as students, the fact that y'all participate in so many events in the community and support so many, in so many different ways. And I know y'all do the same thing at your campuses, y'all are considered leaders at your campus, and we're just really, really proud of our junior ROTC program. So thank y'all for being here, and thank y'all for exhibiting excellence in everything you do. So thank y'all very much. I'll read our script. Good evening and a welcome. As President of Board of Trustees, this San Angelo Independent School District, I'd like to welcome everyone who's present at tonight's regular board meeting. I also welcome those of you who are watching the tape of our meeting on our public access channel, Channel 4. We appreciate your interest in our students. All items that will be discussed at our meeting this evening have been posted as required by state law. Also, as you may be aware, our board meets a minimum of two times per month, and most, if not all, of the items on our agenda this evening have been previously discussed at an earlier pre-agenda board workshop. As members of the San Angelo Independent School District's Board of Trustees, we're here to set goals, list reports from our superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and to make policy for the school district. Please keep in mind that our meeting is a meeting of the Board of Trustees held in public and not a meeting of the public. However, with that in mind, we have an item on every one of our meeting agendas that allows anyone present who wishes to speak to our board team an opportunity to do so. I will make certain that we give everyone an opportunity to speak on any item not listed on our agenda. Additionally, prior to taking any votes, I will ask audience members if they would like to make any comments. Anyone wishing to make comments on any agenda item should do their best to limit their comments to three to five minutes. In compliance with Texas state law, these proceedings are recorded and will become a part of SEISD's permanent legal record. In order that the tape might adequately reflect the proceedings, I ask that you please refrain from talking while others might be speaking. I also ask that you remind my fellow board team members to please turn off our silence or cell phones at this time. Again, it's my pleasure to welcome you to tonight's meeting, and thank you for taking the time to join us here this evening. We appreciate your interest in the activities of our students and the business of our school district. Our next item is the item I just referenced. Item five is anyone wishing to make public comment to our board team on items not on our agendas this evening, now would be a great time to do so. I see no one wishing to do that, so we'll move forward with our agenda. Item six is approval of our minutes. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve the minutes of our May 14, 2018 special finance pre-agenda board meeting and our May 22, 2018 regular board meeting. Are there any comments or questions from our board team concerning our minutes? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, all indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is our report section. Our student enrollment report is actually from the last day of school. I think it shows us up a little over 100, what was it, 114 or something? 118 students the last day of school, more than we had the last day of school last year. So that's good news. We receive that information weekly as part of our Friday fax information provided by our administrative team. The next report is our six, our six weeks annual, our average daily attendance report. And we're down slightly on attendance this year, about six tenths of a percent, but we've come back considerably from the early part of the spring semester. We had a lot of flu issues and had students unable to attend because of a pretty tough flu season. But overall, where our attendance was just short of 95%, so a great job by everyone as far as making sure that we have students in attendance each day. I don't think we have anything to report from our partnership with Goodfella, but Dr. Ritter does have an update on academic progress, I believe. Thanks, Jana.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Lehman and Dr. Detloff, members of the board. We just wanted to take a little bit of time to update you on our summer programs this summer and highlight what incredible success we are experiencing with our summer programs. In elementary, we are serving students at Reagan and at Crockett, first grade and fifth grade students. Also, our migrant bilingual and special ed students in those special programs as well. What we're so proud of in our elementaries is we're serving fewer students overall because of test results, because it is based on our STAR results from that, from the second administration. But also, we've included first grade for the first time this year with just a little boost camp for them, a lit camp, to help with literacy skills going from first grade to second grade. And our percentage of attendance in all of those areas has just, it's been 94%, 92% for fifth grade, and we're serving over 245 students in those programs. Excuse me. In our middle schools, we have completely redesigned how we're serving our middle school students this year. Each middle school is hosting their own summer school, so they have students on their campuses who are coming. We have, for the first time, the percentage of attendance and students coming and excited about learning in the summer, 93%, 97%, and 94% with a total of 95% attendance in summer school, which is just, really, that's, that's new for us, and we think that it's really because of the focus on the campus and people who know those kids, and they're just, they're using our edgenuity program to help with different remediation, and then also focusing on literacy with our level literacy instruction program as well. At high school, and this is a great celebration, we, we also changed our model for Central, and instead of having a CFC summer school and a Central High School summer school, we combined and we're having it all under the same roof, well, kind of under many roofs, right, at Central High School. We have a record-breaking number of students who are responding. And so at Central, we have 465 students enrolled in summer school, and this is credit recovery, and it's also students with, focusing on EOC, our end of course, you know, for test prep. And they're just excited, they're happy to be there. They're saying, gosh, thank you so much for giving this opportunity. Students who get the opportunity to come to Central, who just finished their freshman year, who get to come and experience the campus, and so it's, it's been very, very successful. And at Lakeview, we have 200 enrolled in the same programs, and our teachers at both places have said that they're seeing kids just experience success at a level that they have not before. So we're just really thrilled about this and wanted to share this with you today. So thank you so much for your support of these programs. Any questions?
Any questions, comments? Yeah, absolutely, Dr. Detloff.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman. Also, I just want to highlight, and I am very appreciative of our curriculum and instruction department and our executive directors for redesigning summer school to meet the needs of our students. So you can tell, that's evidenced by the increased attendance rate, also a great focus on building those literacy skills even at the upper levels. So I'm very appreciative of the work that our CNI department and our executive directors have accomplished with summer school, so thank you.
Thank you. It's certainly a team approach, and we appreciate the whole team. Thank you.
I would think that'd be a huge kickstart to the year next year, you know, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Having them in the summer and working on those skills.
Yes.
Would be a huge advantage for those students in this, as they enter the fall. So thanks for doing all that.
That's what we're hearing, thank you.
That covers our reports. Our next items are consent items A through G. Do we have a motion to approve consent items A through G?
Move to approve consent items A through G.
We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Gallegos to approve our consent items. Consent item A is consider donations. We had a good month on donations, almost $12,000 worth of donations, a large donation to Bowie PTA, and also a significant contribution from the school's foundation. Others that gave to the district are listed on our board there, so we appreciate the support of our community. Item B's, consider quarterly investment report ending May 31 of 2018. Probably at this time, I want to remind everybody that we covered all these items at our pre-agenda board workshop. Item C is to consider an audit engagement letter with Richard Webb, our certified public accountant, that's done, Webb and Webb's done our, our audit for a number of years. Item D's, consider superintendent's recommendations for personnel for the school year. Matt put a, Mr. Kimball put a, an addendum to that list at our, at our places here this evening, so if anybody would like to look at that or have any questions for, of Matt concerning any of those, now would be a great time to discuss that, but we reviewed all the others at our previous board meeting. Item E's, consider bids for child nutrition department for 2017 to 2018 school year. This is equipment, an equipment bid. Item F is to consider bids for the child nutrition department. This is for frozen and staple foods. And item G's to consider bid number 18020 for broadcast rights for our athletic events for both high schools. So do we have any questions or comments concerning any of our items A through G? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is consider bills and accounts and financial statements for the month of May 2018. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Gallegos to consider our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of May 2018. A considerable list of expenditures this month as we ramp up for school in the fall. Do we have any other comments from our board team?
Mr. Lehman, just a note to the folks watching on Channel 4 that, as you mentioned earlier, we reviewed all these reports previously at a pre-agenda meeting last week, and any of those reports can also be found online. sais.org is the website. There's a main tab marked District, and if you click on that tab District, you'll see a subcolumn marked Financial Transparency, and you can find all those reports online if you care to view any of those.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. Any other comments or questions from our board team concerning our bills, accounts, and financial statements for the month of May? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider the proposed amendment to the district's official budget and the food service fund. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
We have a motion to approve from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Parker to approve an amendment to our food service fund. Are there questions or comments concerning our motion? Is there any public comment? If not...
I was going to ask, what, we probably discussed, I'm sure we discussed it last. What are we, what are we purchasing?
This is part of the required spend down of our excess fund balance in our food service fund, and they have a whole list of equipment that they've submitted to the TDA, and they're buying it now.
You know, as you remember, Mr. Gallegos, you know, we had too much money in our food service fund, so they wanted to make sure that we spent that down and got a more reasonable fund balance. So we've done too good of a job of, you know, of managing our food service fund.
We issued some significant POs for, for equipment for some of the campuses, so.
So any other questions concerning our proposed amendment to our food service fund? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is, I have a lot of friends that think our school board doesn't do much during the summer, and certainly our administrative team, as we learn from, from Jana, and our teachers are busy throughout the summer, but we're also busy as a board doing a lot of preparation for our budget for... But we're also busy as a board doing a lot of preparation for our budget for 2018, 2019. So, Dr. Bright's going to review our compensation plan for 2018, 2019. Dr. Bright.
Thank you, Mr. Lehman and Board. Appreciate the opportunity to stand before you tonight and offer our compensation proposal for the upcoming school year. We know this is an important piece of the budget process because over 80% of the budget is tied up in salaries and benefits, and that's generally true at school districts all over the state because it takes people to serve children in our business. We know that competitive wage rates are important because it helps us attract and recruit quality candidates. Of course, once we get them here, we're going to invest in their professional development and hopefully, through some annual salary increases, it'll help us retain those people that we invest all that money in. But there's also two items we look at when we're looking at compensation. One is, we need to live within our means. And so, whatever we put on the table, we know we have to maintain fiscal responsibility for our taxpayers. That's critical. And then, second, is sustainability. Salaries are recurring costs, and you can get in trouble in a hurry if you don't maintain control of those recurring costs. So, maintain fiscal responsibility and sustainability are two keys that we look at whenever we present compensation increases. So, having said that, we know that we spent a lot of time in pre-agenda going through the details of this proposal. So, tonight, we'll have an executive summary. It'll be short and sweet, but if there's any details that you think we've left out that the general public needs to know, feel free to chime in, and we'll take it from there. So, here's our recommendations for this upcoming school year. First, we have, I believe there are six, what we call families in our pay plan. The first one we'll look at is the T family. We know that contains teachers and several other categories of employees. What we're going to ask is that you approve a $1,500 general pay increase to all the members of the T family. As we talked about in pre-agenda, we framed that as $150 per month because not everyone in the T family works 10-month contracts. So, if they work 11-month contracts, you can take 150 times 11, and that will be their general pay increase. This is pretty significant cost because there's quite a few people in the T family, over 1,000 employees are in the T family. And this cost will be approximately $1.49 million. Okay? Pretty significant piece of the puzzle. Next, we looked at the other families in the pay grades. For the past three years, as we discussed last week, we have not moved our boxes. We have a minimum midpoint and a maximum in each of these pay families. And so, this year, we're going to move all the boxes at least 2%. And there are four boxes in the manual trade section, the first four boxes, that are moved more than 2%. They've kind of lagged behind in the market, and we felt like that we needed to touch those a little more than 2%. So, we've done that, and y'all have looked at that as well. So, we've moved the pay ranges, 2% minimum, and then we apply a 3% pay increase to the midpoint of the pay range. It's not a 3% of their salary, 3% of the midpoint. Y'all are well schooled in that. Cost of this is just under $1 million, $965,000 to be exact. So, up to this point, we have approximately $2.455 million in base salary increases. There are some soft costs, which include workers' comp, TRS issues, unemployment. They add up over all that money, another $235,000. So, we're looking at $2.69 million for the salary increase. We talked in depth about the issues at TRS. We have new health insurance rates for our employees. I don't want you to lose sight of the net perspective of the way salaries increases because even though we give salary increases, a lot of it gets eaten up through health insurance increases. And this is no different again this year. They've increased the rates, and we wish to continue to offer all our employees a no-cost So, we're asking that we increase the district's contribution rate from $355 per month per employee to $370 per month per employee, which will allow our employees to buy employee-only high deductible plans. It's called TRS Active Care 1. That's the lowest-cost plan they offer. That's a significant cost with approximately, well, with over 2,000 employees, that the $365,000 impact to our budget.
Dr. Bright, do most districts offer a compensation as a payoff for their first tier of insurance? Similar districts around us?
Say that one more time, make sure I understand the question.
We contribute $370 to the healthcare net pace for the first TRS Active Care. The most other districts of our size and scope contribute to cover that $370 of that first TRS Active Care.
Not all of them. We discussed in pre-agenda that the state contributes $75 a month to the plan, but you're required to at least pay 225, or was it 225? 225 a month is what we're required. Thank you. And so, we contribute more than that. Most, I did hear about 20% of the schools in the state pay the minimum. So, we're one of the 80 that pay more. Some pay more than 355, 370. It's all over the board. It's generally what they can afford and what helps keep their employees employed at their So, another $365,000. When you put all this together, like I said, it adds up pretty quickly. One of the unique things we do as well here, and I think is very important, especially to Dr. Detloff, this is something he really likes to push for, is that we are able to provide a $500 insurance supplement to all the staff in the district. It comes in the form of a one-time payment. It is not something that our employees need to think they're going to receive all the time. It is a one-time payment. We can pull it anytime we get into a financial situation where we have to. We're getting close to that point, but we believe we can pull this off another year. It is a significant amount of money. It is well-received and greatly appreciated. That's an approximate cost of just over $1 million to our budget, and that comes straight out of the general fund. Putting all this together, we know the base cost is a little over $3 million. When you add the insurance supplement, it's another million. So, this is significant. It's a big piece of money here out of our budget. But the thing that we talked about was sustainability, and we look very carefully at the general fund. That's our general operating dollars. We have to be able to sustain these costs over time. And so, even though it's over a $4 million package, the sustainable costs of the general fund are just over $2.6 million. And that's the one we really track carefully. Again, we can afford this. We looked long-term about sustainability. We are going to bring a balanced budget. In fact, we're going to bring a surplus budget to the table in August for the board, and we think is fiscally responsible and well within our means to take care of our employees. So, with that said, I'll stop right there. That was very short and sweet. I know we went into a lot more detail about this last Monday, so help me out there, Mr. Lehman.
Any questions for Dr. Bright?
Yeah, Jeff, one more, well, after we vote, I guess, when would all this be implemented? Starting July or...
The fiscal year, September 1, so it will hit everyone in September 1.
Mr. Parker?
You probably stated it, but I think it's worth mentioning again. As far as us giving raises to our teachers, would you tell our audience again how many years we've been giving raises to our teachers?
Yes, sir.
There seemed to be some, the past few months, there was some question of whether or not we've been giving raises to our teachers. Would you please emphasize that?
Yes, sir. I've been here 15 years now. We've given, we've been fortunate to be able to give salary increases 14 out of those 15 years. The one year we were not able to do that was the year that the state cut $5.4 billion out of the educational budget, and that year, we froze salaries. Other than that, 14 out of 15.
Probably one thing that we covered last week that I don't remember if we had it in the presentation or not, is that our starting pay for teachers didn't change.
Correct.
But currently, we're, in this region, we compete pretty well as far as starting pay.
Yes, sir. And I noticed when that bullet came up a while ago, I just kind of flashed right over it. But we're maintaining teacher salaries at $40,000 per year. That's the second-highest starting salary in Region 15. Del Rio still has a higher starting salary. We also pose, a lot of our area peers, West Texas peers, the larger districts, we're lagging behind them. There's mid-40s up to Midland's $50,000 a year for a starting teacher. So, this is where we're at.
Yeah, so we're pretty competitive as far as this region, and certainly, there's other factors that I'd be glad to share with everybody about cost of living in Midland and Odessa and things like that, that, you know, they're short a couple of hundred teachers currently because, one, they can't find any teachers, and then if they found some, they couldn't find a place to live. So, there's other factors in some of those markets that force them to pay or pretty much require them to pay that much to attract quality staff. But we do have a longstanding commitment to our teachers, and I think this certainly illustrates that and points that out.
Mr. Lehman, I'd like to make a motion.
Yes, sir.
A move that we approved the plan that's been outlined, which is to maintain a beginning salary of $40,000 for employees in the T family, a $1,500 general pay increase for returning employees in the T family, a 2% minimum adjustment to pay ranges, and a 3% midpoint pay increase for eligible employees in the administrative slash professional head start slash early head start information technology, clerical, paraprofessional, and manual trades job families, an increase in the district's health insurance contribution to $370 per month, revisions to the district's pay plan, including the temporary seasonal extra-duty positions and stipends as presented, and a $500 health insurance supplement to assist employees with increase in TRS active care premiums.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Great motion and a second by Mr. Gallegos. Any other board comments or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item, Ms. Taunton's going to talk about early head start and head start cost of living adjustments, COLA adjustments. Rachel, thanks for being here.
Good evening, Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, and members of the board. I am here to seek approval for a 2.6% cost of living adjustment for head start and early head start. On May 1 of 2018, the Office of Head Start issued this increase for all head start programs and early head start programs nationwide. The purpose of this COLA is to increase, to permanently increase the base funding for, on the salary level. For head start, that is a total of $77,814.70, $48,391,000 of that going towards personnel, and $25,186 going towards fringe benefits. That leaves us with a remainder of a little over $4,000 that we will apply back to the classroom supplies for the program year. In early head start, the 2.6% COLA is a $27,508 increase, with $20,290 of that going to personnel and $6,986 going towards fringe benefits. We have just a little bit of remainder of $231.26, which will be applied back into the classroom supplies.
Any questions for Ms. Taunton? So, is this effective in May when they head start granted it, or is it effective for our fiscal year, which would start in September?
Yeah, I think it would be effective for us, like September 1 as well.
Okay, okay.
And you said, how much was the increase for the COLA?
2.6.
2.6.
So, 2.6, and then we, the district makes up the difference, you know, based on our 3% that we pay the rest of the T group. Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval of the 2.6% cost of living adjustment request for SAISD head start and early head start.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. We have a motion for Mr. Dindal and a second for Mr. Parker to accept the administration's recommendations for a 2.6% cost of living adjustment request for our head start and early head start employees. Is there any further board comment or questions? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed, indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is item 13, consider our 2018, 2019 district improvement plan. Mr. Munn was hoping that he would have a new grandchild today and not be here, but he hadn't had one, so he's here. So, thanks for being here, Dean.
Well, shucks. It will happen tomorrow, one way or the other. So, excited about that. Mr. Lehman, Dr. Detloff, members of the board, in April and May, our district site-based team met to conduct our comprehensive needs assessment and make revisions to our district improvement plan. Over the past few years, you, I'm sure you've noticed, we have made considerable changes to our plan, primarily reducing its length considerably so that we have a little better focus on the critical needs of the district. So, there are minimal changes this year. That's the good news. Just briefly, I'll cover the goals. I won't go into depth unless you need more information and some of the objectives. But, you know, goal one is our performance goal, and we strive under goal one to address the needs of our populations that need the most assistance, such as our economically disadvantaged students, our at-risk population, special education, English language learners. This is much, very much so rooted in our student performance when it comes to local and state-level assessments, as well as any improvement items that are noted by the state or federal programs as well. So, that's where we find our strategies to address the needs of those populations. In addition there, we addressed dropout rate, and you will also see an objective to continue to provide equal access to technology devices, and that's straight out of the needs assessment process as well, just noting a need. We're going the right direction, but we want to continue to strive for equality across the district. Goal two, students graduate from San Angel ISD college and career-ready. The definition of college and career-ready, according to the state, has expanded greatly, so it wouldn't surprise me if our needs changed a little bit as we see additional data sets come out. But here, like, for instance, already, we know that we need to focus on performance at higher levels, not just approaches, which is what we call passes, but at the meets and masters performance level. Those are indicators of college and career readiness, so you find that under goal two. And we also want to ensure that our kids are taking care of, taking advantage of all the, beyond the foundation high school program, but they're also getting endorsements and things of that nature, and they know about those endorsements and have opportunities to pursue those. Goal three was unchanged. That's our maintaining fiscal responsibility, and as Dr. Bright just pointed out, he did a great job there. So, that's maintaining a balanced budget, which he mentioned that we are. So, goal four, improving communications between all stakeholders. Last year, there was some discussion about whether or not we could measure how many opportunities our parents and guardians and folks have to participate in meaningful activities. Went back to the district site-based committee, that goal, that objective has changed, and we're focusing on making an effort to have all parents or guardians participate in at least one meaningful activity. So, that will be easier to measure. We haven't set up the measurement, but we're going to work towards that. Goal five, safety and security. No, this is secure and retain effective staff. So, you find objectives here where we make every effort to have 100% of our teachers state-certified, and our instructional aides certainly make sure that they are highly qualified. that they are highly qualified. One of the things we take a lot of pride in, in this district is providing high-quality professional development. Just last week, we had a great event, Learning Palooza, and this week, we've got Engage kicking off, is it tomorrow, with over three hundred educators attending that. So those efforts, you find specifically addressing the needs of our students within this goal as well. And then last but not least, we have the safe and secure environment under goal six. We know that we had a recent district safety plan. You don't have to look far to see the efforts that are going to secure our campuses, so we're trying to implement elements of that, that safety plan within this goal. I know that's a very brief overview note that we, we come to you this month seeking your approval of this, this plan. It's, it's early in the process because we know we have ratings that come out that impact some of our targets, and as we continue to look at our data that's in right now, it does impact how we adjust those targets. But the fact of the matter is, we do have a federal grant to, to apply for, and this needs approval before we do that. So I seek your approval for the eighteen, nineteen district improvement plan.
Thanks, Mr. Munn. A pretty short, but detailed, relatively detailed description, so thank you very much. Any questions from any of our board team members?
When, when our district improvement plan is finished, we get all our, we'll get, we'll see that again.
Yes, you know, what you'll see is when the ratings come out, we will have a report that will include the, the rate, performance ratings, and we can address any adjusted targets at that time. Would that suffice?
Yes.
Thanks, Dr. Kingman. Other questions? Do we have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district improvement plan is outlined.
Second.
Thank you. So we have a motion from Dr. Kingman and a second from Mr. Parker to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen district improvement plan. Are there other questions or comments from our board team? Any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thanks, Dean, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And can, good luck and congratulations. Is it a boy or a girl you're expecting?
Willow. Young, young lady will arrive tomorrow on her schedule, not anyone else.
That's good, so we'll, we'll look forward to Willow arriving on.
She's a great decision. My decision is very important.
On her schedule. So, our next item's item fourteen, to consider a two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen waiver and to conduct a hearing for optional flexible school day program, which is our PAYS program, and Ms. Hollihan's going to help us with that.
Thank you, sir. Board members, Dr. Detloff, and audience, this is a public hearing notifying Texas Education Agency that San Angelo Independent School District intends to participate in the optional, in the optional, optional flexible school day program. PAYS, which stands for Preparing Area Youth for Success, is an alternative education, let me repeat that, is an alternative academic education program, serving as a dropout recovery, a dropout prevention program designed to respond to individual student needs. The goal of this program is to create alternative paths for graduation for students who have not been successful in a traditional school setting. Since the reopening of PAYS in two thousand and eight, approximately one thousand fifty students have earned a high school diploma. This program truly meets students' needs, and we are so proud of our graduates and the success of this program. Does anyone in the audience, board members, have any questions about optional flexible school day program?
Optional, op, optional.
It is, it's difficult, isn't it?
Optional flexible school day program than it, than the acronym OFSDP.
It is. But then you would ask me what it stands for.
That's exactly, so acronyms are, you know, thank you for helping us with those.
If they're.
I think all of us are, you know, pretty well-versed in that program and are appreciative that our district's been able to provide that for so many years for, as an alternative to so many of our students. Every year when we attend that, I think it's almost a constant reminder of how many students that we're reaching that we wouldn't be reaching as a result of that program. So certainly, our kudos to the, our administrative team for offering that type of program.
With that, I'm asking the board to approve this application for the optional, optional flexible school day program.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the PAYS as our optional flexible school day program?
I'm going to try. Move to approve the PAYS optional flexible school day plan waiver for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen academic year.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Dindal. We have a motion from Mr. Dindal and a second from Mr. Parker. I'm glad they can say optional. Any other comments from our board team? Any questions or comments from our audience? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Thank you, Shelley. Our next item Shelley gets to do as well, which is a low attendance waiver for two thousand fif, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Thank you.
Ms. Hollihan.
Districts have the opportunity to request a waiver to excuse any instructional day from ADA, average daily attendance, and FSP, Foundation School Program Funding Calculations, that have attendance at least ten percent points below the last school year's overall average attendance due to inclement weather, health, or safety-related issues. On February sixteenth of this year, Central freshman campus had an attendance rate of seventy-nine point one-two percent, when their last year's average daily attendance was ninety-five point eight percent. And Central High School attendance was seventy-three point seventy-one percent, when their average daily attendance is ninety-five point two percent. They had low attendance because of misinformation regarding student safety being spread on social media. Then on May second, Lincoln Middle School had an attendance of seventy-three point forty-two percent, when their average daily attendance is at ninety-five percent. Also had low attendance because of misinformation regarding student safety being spread on social media. Dr. Detloff, would you please talk about some of the action steps our district is taking regarding safety?
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Hollihan. I, I believe it's an appropriate time as a segue to Ms. Hollihan's report on the low attendance waiver due to school safety to highlight some of the actions our district is taking. As our board members received last week, on July thirtieth, we have a proposed safety and security workshop at five forty-five PM, so that will be conducted July thirtieth. Right now, our administrators, leaders are having multiple meetings, engaging our, our principals and local staff. Just this morning, we had a joint meeting with the fire department, the police department, the sheriff's office, that was arranged by Monte Althouse, and in that meeting, we are looking at multiple measures for staff training, where our entire SA ISD staff will be trained late July and August. Part of this training is the URAES system, and that acronym is the Unified Response to Active Shooter Events. Also coupled with that is CRAZE, or Citizens Response to Active Shooter Events, and SAFD, the fire departments, Stop the Bleeding. So these three, multiple professional development opportunities around school safety will be offered by our local professionals in partnership with our police department, fire department, sheriff's office, and that will be offered to every employee July and August. Some of the other actions we've initiated, our board was proactive in two thousand seventeen and initiated a school audits, school audit, security audit through CRUX. We've complied with adding a thousand security cameras, are being added this summer. We've added a new position out of Title Four, which is a mental health and behavioral support specialist that will help our middle school identifying potential disenfranchised students or at-risk students through Title Four funds. We've also, as I mentioned, Monte Althouse, the Director of Campus Operations and Safe Environments, that is his new position, previously being the principal at Lakeview High School. We've also conducted three additional summer meetings with staff in June. Thanks to our maintenance operations department and Dr. Bright's office, we have hardened entry and controlled entry points to two of our campuses. Additional campuses are being planned as funding becomes available. As you know, in two thousand eighteen, we had a bond referendum where seventy-eight percent of the facilities was focused on safety and security. So we are taking small incremental steps to adjust that on our own, but certainly is not as quickly paced as we had planned due to our bond referendum. We've implemented safety lockdown buttons on campuses this summer, I believe two have been completed already. We're enhancing our district safety committee, looking at upgrades on NICSIL alerts. In June, we had a mini-training with the URAES system that I identified earlier with our leadership staff, and again, we met this morning as well to conduct that. We had a follow-up meeting June eleventh with Danny Williams from SAPD to look at security items. This Thursday, the twenty-first, we have a, a joint meeting scheduled with the West Texas Counseling and Guidance Center to create plans for our emotionally distressed students that may be contemplating suicide or self-harm as well. So we've also moved our counselors from testing items, we've moved that away from our counselors to assistant principals at our secondary campuses to free up more time. So we believe that is a two-pronged approach in that the psychology and the behavior aspect and early identification is the key to school safety and security. So these are many of the action items that were implemented, and we will continue to funnel these down through July thirtieth, where we can have a, a strict action plan that all of our campuses will, will adhere to, to provide a, a safety net for our students. Thank you, Ms. Hollihan.
Thank you, sir. The administration is recommending the board approve the waiver for low attendance days for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Move to approve the administration's recommendation to, for a waiver for low attendance for the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen school year.
Second.
Thanks, Mr. Parker. We have a motion from Mr. Parker and a second from Mr. Dindal. Great job, Dr. Detloff, you know, kind of outlining what our current plans are, and, you know, it's kind of a work in progress. I think we're looking at a number of other ways and to further enhance, you know, our learning and make sure that we're doing everything possible in, in those areas to make sure our students are as safe as possible and our staff is totally, as trained as possible in, in dealing with those type circumstances. So do we have any other board comment or questions concerning this waiver? I guess the one comment I would make, and, and I guess it's, it regards social media, you know, in, in every case, that our district knew about these threats and were, we were incredibly well-prepared in dealing if something had happened, you know, we had planned in, in advance of anything happening, and certainly were, were well-prepared the day of any supposed, you know, safety issues on campus. The concern I have is, you know, with social media, it becomes almost a hysteria, and, you know, you can, if you have any doubt about that, you can, you know, when you, when your attendance goes down twenty percent on a particular campus, then it's a huge concern to the district. And again, the things we're doing this summer, I think will help us, you know, to positively address that and be, and, and further convince our community that we're doing the things we need to do in, in order to guarantee as, as much as you can do that. I, I don't know that there's any defense for crazy, but we're doing everything we possibly can to, to make sure we have a safe environment, and people on social media are, it's frustrating when something like that happens. Do we have any other board comments or questions? Do we have any public comment? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our next item is to consider our delegate and our alternate delegate for the Tazby Convention in September. Do we have a motion? I'll make the motion since, since, since we have two outstanding volunteers. Before I get volunteered, I'll, I make a motion that we approve. Amy Mizell Flint is the official voting delegate, and Gerard Gallegos is the alternate delegate for the two thousand eighteen Tazby TASSA Delegate Assembly in, that occurs on September twenty-eighth through thirtieth in Austin, Texas. Do we have a second?
Second.
So we have a motion from Mr., we have, we have a motion from Mr. Lehman and a second from Mr. Parker. I might point out that we're also the longest-standing members of the board, so it's natural for us to support that type of, of a motion, so. Do we have any comments or questions from our board team? My, my comment would be, thanks again, Amy and Gerard, for volunteering to do that. I certainly feel like our district's well-represented by having y'all fulfill those roles, so thank you. Any further board comment, any questions from our audience? If not, all in favor of our motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Again, thanks, Ms., thanks to Amy and Gerard. Our next item is to review our board operating procedures and standards. I think we got this as part of our packet, we also got it as part of our Friday facts. This is, should be nothing new to any of us, but just wanted to make sure there weren't any questions prior to us reviewing and approving our board operating procedures and standards. If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve the board operating procedures and standards as amended at the meeting.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Mr. Gallegos. Do we have a second?
Second.
A second from Mr. Dindal. Any board comments or questions concerning our operating procedures or standards? Any public comment? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye, any opposed indicate by saying no. Our motion passes. Our only items we have left, other than our training this evening, our announcements, our Central High School summer graduation is scheduled this Friday, June twenty-second, at two, at one PM at the Sarah Bernhardt Theater. And I think I told Becky that I would attend to do that, so anyone else wishing to join me, feel free to do so. Our upcoming events are our finance and pre-agenda board workshop in July is on a Thursday, that's July nineteenth, so that's a little bit different than norm, so please be sure and mark your calendar for July nineteenth at five forty-five, and then our regular board meeting will be the following week, on July twenty-third, again at five forty-five. Do we have any further business that, yeah, here's some, Carl gave me some additional stuff here, so let's see.
And Mr. Lehman, I can provide these dates and proposed dates, it's really an add-on to.
Okay.
Your recent comments, but just so we have them in one place, I can make copies of these as well, and I, I believe you received them last time, but I'll make a few additional copies this evening as well.
Perfect. So we have a academic workshop this evening scheduled to begin at seven, so we're pretty much on target. July nineteenth, I mentioned the finance and pre-agenda, the twenty-third is our regular board meeting. July thirtieth is our proposed safety and security workshop that Carl mentioned a minute ago. We do have some questions about timing for that, so we probably need to get back with Becky and let her know whether noon is better or our regular board meeting time, which is five forty-five, would be best. And to my earlier comments about boards not doing anything in August, in August, we, in August, we have a meeting scheduled August sixth, August thirteenth, August twentieth, and then we don't have it announced yet, but at some point in time, we'll have a meeting on August twenty-seventh to approve our, most likely to approve our, our tax rate, right, Jeff? So we'll have a meeting every Monday. So I know we're excited about. So I know we're excited about that. Any, any other comments or other items that we need to consider before we adjourn this evening? If not, and here are no objection, we'll stand adjourned.